Well, thanks everyone for joining us. Uh, just as a reminder, this is a board work session, so no minutes are taken, no decisions will be made at this session. We are video recording it, as you just heard, and we'll put this up on our YouTube channel. So, um, bring everybody up to speed. I think everybody knows, in fact, who's on right now, that, um, the budget was ratified last night, uh, very productive and interesting discussion. And, um, we are ready to move forward. So the purpose of this meeting is for us to look at the most recent cost projections and to make decisions. In draft form, I guess I should say, about how we proceed and what we do first and what we try to accomplish. I think that uh, we will, we lean towards probably having a special board meeting to, uh, vote on approving the board moving forward and entering into agreements with various vendors to complete our work. And, uh, I think that's going to be best served by a special online board meeting. Uh, ideally this coming week, probably Wednesday morning while I'm in Boston. I don't know what your schedule is like Wednesday morning, Doug. You two are in. Well, you're traveling Wednesday, aren't you?
I'm gonna be on an airplane.
We're just gonna have to figure this out. Uh, the next viable option would be probably Thursday evening, or, um, I think we should do it in the evening. So do you know what your schedule is like for Thursday of this coming week? You'll be in Boston, right?
I, yeah, I can be free by the evening.
Okay, let, let's tentatively plan on, on that. So, uh, as a first step, kind of want to remind everybody where we were at on March nineteenth. And that is, uh, we were looking at the reserve balance being around two hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars and at the end of FY twenty-four. And, um, the, uh, uh, budget had a surplus of um, thirty-eight thousand, three sixty-two. Um, and expenses out of reserves, if we move forward with the plan that was passed in March, um, we would wind up at the end of FY twenty-five with around a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in reserves. And what I said last night is I wasn't speaking for the board, but I, I, I expressed that I thought we would try to do everything possible to meet that objective. Having said that, um, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to protect uh, the safety and well-being of the community and to, uh, address the value of the community. And so we have to balance that obligation, meet that obligation. And that may mean that we have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in reserves at the end of the day. So I, I don't think that's an absolute firm objective. So, um, and by the way, if you want, you're welcome to put questions in the chat as we move along. We'll try to keep an eye on those. So, um, keep things simple. Um, I'm going to show the original budget and the revised budget and the projected expenses that I think we have as of today. So I'm gonna go ahead and hide the original budget other than to show just briefly that, uh, as a result of last night's meeting, we will go from three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in projected spend to seven hundred and ten thousand and five hundred and sixty dollars in projected spend. So I'm gonna hide this column just to keep us simple.
Can you blow up the screen a little?
Uh, sure. How's that?
That's better.
So what has changed since then? We are still in discussions with Ella Washington Agency. But I think what we have learned as of this morning is that we basically have to pay for the entire premium um, in two thousand twenty-five. So, um, that is increased, the to- the total expenditure is around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, but, um, we, um, and I, and I can bring up a spreadsheet so I can be more precise on that. I should probably do that on the insurance question. So.
Oh.
Just having troubles. Sorry. And more troubles. Come on, go over. So this is our expiring coverage and, um, everything that we are paying for the travelers is wrapped up uh, down below in a total cost of a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's the coverage that's expiring. We were budgeted for a hundred and twenty-one thousand. As we talked about last night, we have a combination of carriers and um, it rolls up to a cost of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. But because we don't want to spend all of this, they require the premium all to be paid upfront. There's a financing option that adds another five thousand dollars plus to the cost. So that's where I'm getting this a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But the true cost comparison is the budget of a hundred and twenty-one thousand versus the cost of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand plus that interest. So I'm gonna stop there and see if anybody has any questions before I turn back to the spreadsheet. Okay. Back to the spreadsheet at hand. So we're looking at the difference between where we were at when we met on March um, twenty-second uh, versus where we're at today is that we have a twenty-one thousand dollar increase in our insurance spend. Again, we're looking at different options, uh, to, to help mitigate that cost increase, but that's sort of a worst case scenario. So the next part of our budget that's in play is the utilities and, um, we're projecting some savings from the weather tech um, that I hope will be real. I'm a little concerned that the water may be a low guess, but I also think this may be a year where we don't water as much. And in August and September, we have a few brown spots. I know that doesn't make sense given that how little we watered last year, but um, and have problems, but that's kind of a casual observation. For the landscape and maintenance, um, the main thing that has changed here is that we have added the EAB and IPS beetle treatment as a specific line item. Uh, Reba, the accountant, put in a significant spin for trees and bushes. And I think we're doing all most of our trees and bushes down in our repairs, so I lowered that a bit. And so we're, we're close to where we were at before. The landscape contract is pretty much a locked-in contract unless there are special projects. And the snow removal is anybody's guess. The sprinkler repairs are also a wild guess. So as to what that's going to involve each year for our property. Next, we go down to building maintenance. And the, um, uh, cha- change there is very nominal. Um, there's, um, uh, really not much to say there from where we were at, uh, in March versus where we're at today. So. And then we go down to our major projects and she consolidated, Reba consolidated these things into general ledger lump categories that I don't think are very meaningful. I think we need to be more granular. But what I'm going to show you is that we were projecting three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in March. We're now projecting three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And I'll show you where, uh, a lot of that is coming from. So sort of working from the top of the expenditures down, um, nothing has changed um, in the budget until you get to the willow tree. We before were projecting three thousand, five hundred dollars in cost. We, we now have learned as of this morning that the willow tree has to be removed. Uh, Fine Tree Services has given us the second opinion. And at the major trunk, there is a massive rot, and they were going to send a written report with video and photos. And the tree is not safe. And, and to trim it down to where that joint is would leave so little tree left that it's not it wouldn't look right. So I'm, I'm sad to report that, um, that's, that's, uh, that has to go. The, um, cost is pretty firm. Um, we don't have a quote in writing yet, but it's gonna be right at twelve thousand, five hundred. Uh, we had the Cheyenne Privet in before at six thousand dollars. We have, we, I'm recommending we cut that back to fifteen hundred. And that, um, we use volunteer help to help to remove the dead branches from that hedge rather than paying six thousand dollars. Again, these are recommendations for, um, Gary and Doug and the owners to consider. Um, but nothing, nothing significant there. So. The, um, tree trimming came in less than projected a little bit. Um, in, um, in March, we were projecting the tree trimming, tree trimming at forty-seven thousand, one hundred. Uh, today, we're, the final bill is going to be forty-five thousand, two hundred. We have some additional expenses, um, that were not in the March, uh, projection. We've had to spend some money on, uh, line locators for building A and for the guardrail. That was an eight hundred dollar spend. That's a firm number. Um, that wasn't in the original budget. The retaining wall at building V was forecast in March at three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. We're adding thirty-two hundred dollars to the cost. I'm hoping we can eliminate that cost with further negotiation, but we've run into some unexpected problems with that retaining wall and, um, we're, we're working on various options, but I've gone ahead and put it in for our budget today. And in the March um, projection, I had one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for repairing the pedestals on our mailboxes. I've since learned that those mailboxes and the pedestal are fully owned by the post office. And I've submitted a repair request and then showing the photos to the manager, she thought it would be approved. So I have zeroed out that cost. There is no change to the cost on the cement stair treads except that we don't have to spend nine thousand dollars in pouring cement because there'll be a uniform, uh, precast, uh, cement stair tread. So we've got about a nine thousand dollar savings there from where we were at in March. And I'll just show that to you. Um, you can see we had nine thousand dollars here from Flat and Square Solutions to augment the twenty-five thousand, seven eighty-seven spend that we would do with the, uh, what was then metal panned stair treads, um, uh, and pouring cement into them. And this is a uniform stair tread. So we've gotten some savings there. We need to fix the welding, uh, on the south staircase at building C. I had that in at five hundred dollars before, or excuse me, building B. That's a, that's a typo. That should be building, um, B, south staircase that you're welcome to go look at if you want. There are some real problems with the welding and the way they were installed and inappropriate cutting of the stringers. So there you go. Um, the, um, uh, stacked unit stair landings, there are three of them. Two at building A and B. They may be both at building A and one at building M. That's a firm cost of five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. Our fence cost has gone from roughly thirty-nine thousand to forty-five thousand uh, for a couple of reasons. Um, one is that they could not use the, uh, mechanical auger on the front of the skid steer. They had to dig by hand. So that raised forty-five hundred in cost. And we have added about twenty-four feet of, uh, fence to be installed in a couple of locations at building E on the drainage and at, uh, the retaining wall for fourteen hundred dollars. But they made a very significant error in the calculation of how much fence was being put on the property. Uh, originally, the calculation was eleven hundred linear feet. It turned out with our addition of twenty-four feet to be one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four linear feet. And the, um, contractor has been able to find some savings and other places to not charge us for that difference. Uh, there is, there is no change to the cost on the retaining wall timbers. I don't think. Let me check that. The retaining wall timbers, um, were seventy at eight thousand, eight twenty before. And they are at eight thousand, three oh four today. Uh, we have surplus rock, about five tons of it that, uh, the board is inclined to move to the front of building of unit E twenty-eight to avoid having that to be a muddy area. The water's gonna be shut off around that unit. Uh, but without any water, grass probably won't grow. And we have confirmed with Green Earth and with, um, uh, well, we would confirm with Green Earth that won't interfere with the landscaping plan there. Uh, this for later in the year, and it won't interfere with any of the drainage system work they're doing at E twenty-eight. We had to demolish some concrete to facilitate the tree, um, removal work, the tree trimming. And so you've seen some torn up sidewalk at E twenty-eight at building P and at the portion of the driveway at L forty-one. That cost is, is known at nine hundred dollars. Uh, Inside Out Home Remodeling did that, and Davy Tree was then able to come in and use their tool to, um, uh, um, fix, um, the, um, to, to, to remove the remaining trees, branches or, um, tree roots and, and root grinding. Uh, and then the question is, can we have the company who repaired the south staircase finance the new repair? Are they licensed and bonded? Are they, are they insured? We should not pay one hundred percent of the fix. I think that repair was done probably more than five years ago. I, is my sense and just looking at it, it's very old. I doubt we have records as to who did that repair. And, um, moving down, we have a uh, design plan and, and quote from Green Earth for doing the zero scape uh, plan around E twenty-eight for fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That has not changed. The retaining wall repair, um, uh, or, uh, and juniper bush removal at E twenty-eight has not changed. The quote from Blue Sky to do mold mitigation at G thirty-one and building K for fourteen thousand, four sixty-nine has not changed. And, uh, the Green Earth proposal for the drainage work at E, G and K has not changed. So what you have down here is today's projected costs at three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight one six. And here we are, we're at March at three hundred and twenty thousand, three thousand, five one nine. We're up twenty-four thousand dollars. So removing the, the willow tree, despite the savings that we got on the Davy Tree side, it doesn't mitigate that. That's a, that's an eleven thousand dollar increase. We had a little bit more spend than we were projecting with, we, I think we missed the recycle bill. Uh, anyway, we're up thirty-four hundred dollars on the advanced engineering and blue sky mitigation work. The flat and square, we have saved nine thousand. We're up sixteen thousand dollars on the various work by Inside Out Home Remodeling. And we're up, uh, two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, um, by, um, by Green Earth, and I missed commenting on that. We are installing permeable edging at buildings Q, R and S. So that's how we get our twenty-four thousand dollar, uh, increase. Um, and the copies of the quote for the zero scaping, yeah, we can, we can share that with you. Uh, I assume that's Kim that's asking for that. Uh, so, and I, the retaining wall quote was changed from what I saw. I would uh, that's covering up the, I'd like to see what it will look like now, including the line item budget. I'm not sure. Nothing is being done with the retaining wall and the zero escaping, um, budget. So not sure what you're meaning there. Um, you're free to unmute too. There's only a few of us on the call if you want to clarify. So going back.
Hey, this is Kim.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So my, my question is, um, can you provide me with the most recent quote line item by line item? So I can see what exactly is going to be done? How many plants I'm getting, where the sprinklers are going, a map? Because the map I have is just all rock. And I think that's it's gonna greatly devalue my property if you just dump rock everywhere, one type of rock. And I'm worried about the plants. I'm worried about the sprinklers. Are you gonna remove the existing sprinklers now before you dump the rock?
Uh, no, we're just gonna dump the rock. Um, Blue, uh, Green Earth has said there's no problem in doing that. And then they would put in new drip lines to the plants that would be part of the zero escaping plan. It will not affect the drip lines inside the sidewalks. That's in a separate zone. Um, but.
Cause I don't oh, I don't have water in the drip lines now. I don't have water anywhere.
They think, they think they can restore that if there isn't water there, but, um, at least turning off the water outside doesn't automatically preclude having water inside the sidewalks. So.
Right. So then is the foundation crack gonna be fixed first and the, um, negative uh, whatever you call it, the slope of the ground, is that gonna be done before you dump rock or the, is it, is the rock gonna be in the way?
Where the rock is going, there is no, there's eight thousand, eight twenty-five and rain and, and drainage work. Green Earth says all of that happens around the, the, the south and east side of your unit where the rock will go at your front door. Um, uh, there is no drainage work, so it doesn't interfere with that.
Okay. So I'm just kind of a mountain of rock in front of my door.
I wouldn't call it mountain, but a nice plaza of rock.
Okay.
But I think it'll look better than a nice, nice muddy mess of mud. So I think it looks much better than that. So. So here we are then, today. Um, uh, I think feeling like we need to make some adjustments to the budget. But before we turn to that, I'd like to sort of show you, and I hope this is uh, fairly large enough print for you to see. Cause we have to look at a, a cash flow situation and when we would do things. And this is not locked in stone in any way, shape or form, very much subject to change. Um, I think Kathy has said that she is fine with the ultimate fix to her retaining wall happening, uh, later. Um, we were putting it in in March because we have a skid steer that's been rented, but that ends today. And so this will probably move two latter months. The, um, uh, fence has been installed and pretty much paid for. They're down to trimming the tops and my, and routering around the tops of them. The, uh, timbers have been replaced. Anyway, the green is showing you when the work will happen and the white is showing you when it will be paid for. So, so we've paid already about sixty-seven thousand dollars in expenses. Um, Davy Tree gave us very generous terms, um, on their work. And so even though the work is now almost done, except for building Z and a stump that needs to be removed at building Q, um, uh, we aren't going to begin paying for that until this month. And they, and they've taken two-thirds of their bill and agreed to move it off to May. So what I think needs to happen, uh, in my opinion is as a first priority is the, um, uh, mold mitigation and the drainage work at buildings E, G and K. And so that work would happen in April and, and May, and we would pay for it in May. And the willow tree, because it is such a significant risk, I think that they're looking at um, we haven't gotten Davy Tree's bid, but I'm sure it's gonna be higher. Just talking with Mickey about it, even though he's giving us a cost break, I think we'll wind up going with Fine Tree. Um, uh, service, and that would happen in April. The bill would be due in May. So that's kind of the next two months. Then we get into the concrete work, which, um, I think would happen in June and July. Uh, being cognizant that we can't have multiple vendors walking all over each other. We would reserve the garage door mud jacking for the paired units to, um, July and August potentially. The permeable edging that Green Earth is going to be installing, we would install in May and pay in June. Uh, that could move up. That's such a small expense. Um, the mailboxes I've zeroed out. The cement stair treads could come in. I think, again, we went, want to be cognizant of how many vendors we're gonna have on the property. But I'm so concerned about the fall potential of someone and be our luck that somebody falls on those, um, trip hazard stair treads that I, I would like to see us move on those sooner than later. So, uh, then you get down to, uh, the repairs of the, uh, garages at the detached units. We, we projected ten. We've only heard from four owners. Uh, chip sealing the streets and, um, new striping. In addition, and included in the chip seal of the streets is the cost of removing the rock island down there behind the garages of building C and to the north of the garages of building B. That's included. I should have probably put it in the description. And then, um, the, uh, zero escaping, uh, happened in November, potentially, uh, payment in December. Um, so. But from what we can see with the likelihood of how the cash will flow, we, we may dip down below a hundred and fifty-five thousand in reserves during the course of the summer, but we should come back up if we can cut out around twenty-four thousand dollars in expense. So what do we do? Um, do you ask? First of all, stop. Last, let you ask questions. So.
What, what is critical for the insurance? We know.
I asked that of Ella and everything's critical. I said, for example, could we put off, um, doing the, uh, um, could we put off doing some of our cement work, um, that you know, um, such as the garage door thresholds? And, and those, um, are at fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Could we put those off into two thousand twenty-six? Uh, and she said, don't do that. So. And some of them have a two-inch, three-inch, uh, trip hazard. So.
What, uh, you said it's about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars?
We are at twenty-four thousand, two ninety-seven on the major repairs. And we are at twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand on the insurance. So it's, it's more like, if, if we cannot improve the insurance, then it's a forty-five thousand dollar gap.
Right. Did these calculations take in insurance payments?
Insurance payments in terms of, of, of what?
The monthly payments.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a spreadsheet. So we have to pay, uh, thirty-one thousand dollars in, um, April, or excuse me, in May to bind the coverage. And in June, as you, there's about ten thousand dollars in the various other coverages that we would have to pay. Um, and then we have a flat monthly payment of ten thousand, forty-eight dollars for the remainder of two thousand twenty-five. And what's weird about it is we then don't pay a premium for like three or four months after that. Uh, we will have paid for the full year premium in the nine months of two thousand twenty-five. So in two thousand twenty-six, we actually have a cash-free period. So in two thousand twenty six, we actually have a cash free period um where we won't have to pay for that.
Cash flow wise, those months we're not paying, can we save that money towards next year's premium?
Well, tho- those months we're not paying are out in two thousand twenty six, there's no months we're not paying in two thousand.
Oh, I thought we were not paying this year, okay, okay.
That was our first assumption is, oh, you're, you were, we're paying a deposit of three months of premium. That must means we don't pay for the, for three months, oh no.
Yeah.
The three months of, of no premium is at the end of the year, not at the beginning, makes no sense.
My next question is, you're shooting for a reserves of one fifty five?
Uh, correct, uh, let me go back to that.
Why is that a magic number?
Uh, it is, it is not a magic, i- it is, it is. You know, we're at two hundred and twenty eight thousand at the end of December, it's sort of a comfort level of, of various owners that we've consulted with. Um, there, there is nothing magical about it.
Okay.
There is a point where your reserves go to a level where you have trouble with new owners getting mortgages.
Right, right, but would that, would that be any different at one twenty five than one fifty five?
I, I'd like to talk with some mortgage companies to find out what their criteria is these days. There's this blacklist that's now become public that Freddie Mae and Fanny Mae, Freddie Mac and Fanny Mae have. That.
But that's on.
One of the calculations is how much reserves there are and how much, how much deferred maintenance there is and your reserve studies and stuff. I, I, the answer is, I, I don't know if, where, where our, where our critical threshold is, my guess is. It's, it's not at a hundred and forty five or a hundred and thirty five, it's at, it's at, at some. Lower percentage of our total all, total overall budget, but. You know, we're looking at what if we had more blue poly break all of a sudden, you know, other catastrophic events that.
What, but what's catastrophic event that could happen that we would need a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars?
That's a really good question, um. Uh, I, I, I know that at times, and I, I don't know how much of the blue poly was replaced, but at times. We were looking at eighteen thousand dollars of expense from a couple of buildings, having it at the same time, the blue poly failing. Your, your unit had blue poly fail and was a very large bill.
Right. The one comment I would make is that the lenders I did talk to prior to all of this, none of them had a number that they would give me. They said you need reserves, I said, how much? Well, we just need to see a budget item for reserves every year, but they wouldn't give me a dollar amount of what was needed.
So thi- this is something for the owners to weigh in on.
Right, right.
And obviously, we don't have to decide the final scope of work uh at our next meeting. But um, this is something for us to keep an eye on. Uh, what I came up with. Um, was um not doing the driveway at W fifty two, it's got some raised edges that are marginal trip hazards. Not doing your sidewalk at O forty four Doug, and only doing four of the stacked unit garages. And moving the zero escaping of uh E twenty eight out into two thousand twenty six, that would save us twenty four thousand dollars. I, I hate to, to not do any of those, you know, um. But if I.
Mud and I'm gonna have massive flooding in my unit. Cause I'm gonna have nothing to stop it from coming in my house.
Well, there, there's drainage system work that's being done to, to. Um, address that, that is not being delayed, this is the zero escaping we're talking about. So.
But I'm still gonna have a field of mud for a year. Or a field of dead. Grass.
You're gonna have some pretty brown grass, but the, the rock is going to go all the way around toward your patio. Uh, so I think it's gonna be a fairly.
But you gotta pull the sprinklers out first before you put down rocks, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to put down, you're gonna have to put down, you're gonna have weeds everywhere if you don't put down any barrier. You're just gonna dump the rocks.
No, no, there's, there's, there is a bear, weed barrier going down under the rock.
But you're not gonna pull out the sprinkler lines.
No, Green Earth has told us we don't need to mess with the sprinkler lines, it will not encumber them to come back in with drip lines for vegetation. And I, I, I don't want you to see this list and think this is what I'm proposing in any way, shape or form. Um, I'm, I'm really hopeful that we will. Uh, not need to take these actions, but I am mindful of the first time I met Gary Peon uh to con- to convince him to come on to the board. Uh, in January and showed him the budget and what kind of things we were doing, and he said, where's your margin for error, where's your variance? And I said, we don't have any, and he said, you're going to find out that your projections are low.
Absolutely, because we keep finding more and more things.
Yep, yeah, tha- that's what unnerves me about our flying without a net on this.
And not having a sidewalk for years is gonna be a problem for me.
Your sidewalk's gonna get replaced um in.
In June?
In June, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, we can, the only reason we're doing it in June is cash flow. Uh, if we, if we.
I think you're gonna have more of a cash flow problem, I don't think you have anticipated how many people can't afford the increased fees.
Yeah, it's a real interesting deal, we've had a lot of owners say they are gonna go ahead and pay the full. Uh, uh, like I am gonna do, the full assessment in June. So it's a one time, it's like a special assessment rather than an ongoing dues increase, so. Yeah, but we, we, we will undoubtedly have some bad debt to dealt, deal with, yeah.
Mm hmm. But the mold and the deadly toxic mold should be taken care of for all of the other owners in May?
Yes, the work will be done in April, uh, the, the, the bills will be paid in May. And the drainage work around your unit and their units, which is major work, will be done in April and May as well.
Now, what about the, the concrete that's below the ground, below the asphalt?
On, on the streets?
That's left on the street, yeah, cause there's many, many units that have that problem, so. We all have this frozen icy step. And there's multiple units like that, and it's a trip.
Wherever we have a sidewalk repair, they're gonna fix that.
And they're full of ice.
Wherever we have a sidewalk repaired, they're gonna fix that, so.
Okay.
But there are probably numerous units that there's no need to do a sidewalk repair that we will still have an ice problem.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Um.
Well.
When is the outside of my unit being repainted and are the white garage doors being repainted?
The white garage doors, with the exception of the buildings that are being painted this year, are the responsibility of the owners, and I believe there is a sense. That we should begin enforcing our rules and regulations that white garage doors are not permissible.
Right, but you had said at a meeting previous that while they're repainting or painting this year. The white garages could be added if the owners wanted to pay for that fee.
Correct.
That the current person who's painting could do those.
Whoever we hire to do the um, um. Painting work, um, uh. We could do an option for them at the owner's expense to paint those garage courses that are not in the painting uh program.
So what about my bare wood, so we're talking about painting later this summer at some random date in the future, what about the bare wood?
You, for the repairs that were just done at your unit, the paint has been, the painter's coming to paint that, I believe this week.
Okay.
And, and obviously, that is a one of our fallback positions, in other years where we have had major work going on, we delayed the painting for a year. I would hate to see us do that, but that's, that's sort of our piggy bank that we would fall into if we had to. Cause. But when we had our major hailstorm, we didn't paint that year. That was two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen, I wanna say, or two thousand twenty, I get confused, but we didn't paint that year. We're gonna have a lot of contractors on the property through the summer, and that's a rationale, I guess, if we had to. But that puts some units off into painting more than eleven years, if, cause everything gets moved back then, so. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you much for joining us, again, this will be up on the YouTube channel. So you can tell folks who missed this, if they wanna be up to speed, what's going on, that they can tune into this, and we'll be announcing. A uh special board meeting, I believe, probably for next Thursday evening. To authorize the board to move forward uh with this, with some form of this plan, it will be a moving target, I guess, so. Thanks much, everybody.